Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Ruben Delarosa to lead us in an invocation.
Dear Lord, we come before you asking you for your mercy on us to halt the spread of the coronavirus. We pray for the those already infected with the coronavirus that they may receive prompt, effective and compassionate medical care that will restore them to health. We pray for your protection and grace for all medical professionals who are courageously treating those infected with coronavirus. May they be shielded, shielded, strengthened and guided as they administer healing treatments and care. We pray for your protection over those most vulnerable to the disease, to our babies, our children, our elderly, our poor, our disabled and those weakened by other health conditions. We pray for those under quarantine that they might be comforted by your presence, your protection from disease, anxiety and fear. We pray for our public healthcare leaders and government agencies that they might be informed and well-prepared as they deal with the coronavirus. Grant them the resources and manpower that they need to use their wisdom in the best interest of the public health. We pray for researchers for our tracking the course of the coronavirus that they may under patterns that will help us understand how to stay healthy. We pray for those researching for treatments, cures and vaccines. May you guide them, renew their new ideas, accelerate their discoveries to fight this disease. We pray that the community areas, countries hardest hit by coronavirus restore their sense of well-being and community, sustain them, comfort them and give them hope. We pray for all of those lives that are disrupted by the coronavirus. We pray for families who have been separated for those whose life goods have been jeopardized. We look for you, oh God, praying that the spread of the coronavirus will halt and that many lives may be spared. We pray that all of this crisis you may draw us closer to you, grow our compassion and increase our knowledge. Thank you for your great physicians who not only heals us but who is very present help in our times of need. As the Bible tells us that you took up, up and carry our diseases. Matthew eight seventeen, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Now would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Welcome everyone to our meeting. I thank you for joining and if you're a citizen joining, be as watching us on a live broadcast, we appreciate your joining in. We know this is difficult and we continue to try to do the best practices that we've been advised to do to try to curb the spread of the virus in our community. And we hope that that our low rates of hospitalizations continue. Hope, we hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, even though it may have been limited and a safe holiday. So again, welcome everybody. Now, I'll call the meeting to order. This has been, this is a regular meeting in the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted and go to Citizen Communication. And Amanda, I believe we have one, or tell us who signed up for Citizen Communication, one item they've signed up for.
Yes, Mayor, it's Mr. Ron Losano, twenty-four ten Riverside Drive. And would like to be called during the meeting. Topic number seven, item number seven of the agenda.
All right, we'll call him at that time. There's no one else that's signed up to speak now or any other agenda item or submitted any written comment?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mayor.
All right, item one is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November fourth, 2020. Is there a motion? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I should want to pull a man. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. Item two, I have received is the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move, Mayor?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item three, presentation by Hilltop Securities and possible action regarding the bond refunding opportunities for the city of Harlingen.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner and staff. I'm happy to welcome Anne Intrek in with Hilltop Securities. She's here to discuss some possible refunding opportunities of our bonds for the city of Harlingen. Anne?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners and Mr. Serna and Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be before you this evening. I hope all of you and your families are doing well. I have a presentation this evening that I'd like to walk through. Working to get that on the screen.
Can we get with you a bit of you to share the screen, Samuel?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the presentation and she'll do the discussion.
Okay, okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. If I may ask you to please turn to the next slide after this. Perfect. So as I do so frequently when I am before you, we're going to start talking about the bond buyers index because I believe that that really helps to explain why I'm before you this evening. This is the economic indicator that comes out every Thursday that you've, that we've talked about before. And this shows a ten-year history. And what I think is actually very interesting is that if we look at what the number was this current Friday, and we sent this in about a week or so ago to make sure it would go through all the city processes. The most current rate that we have now is a two point one three. So it's actually down six basis points. If this chart were to be extended to the left, I went back and researched it. The bond buyers index started in January of nineteen sixty-one. And the rate that we had this year on August sixth was the lowest rate that has been in place since this index has been kept. On that particular date, the interest rate was a two point oh two. So with the current number going down to a two point one three, we are eleven basis points are zero point one one percent off of what is a sixty-year low. Next slide. This is the same chart, but I've only gone back to show a two-year history. And I think this is interesting because if we go back really looking about July of twenty eighteen, the BBI was a four point three seven. And the most current number we show on the chart is a two point one nine. But if you look at where the all-time low was just a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, interest rates fell over two hundred and thirty-five basis points, which is really again what creates the opportunity. You can see if you look between January and July, that it looks like multiple Ms. That was the time that everything hit with the coronavirus and we saw rates go up and down and up and down again. Next slide. So this is the municipal market data yield curve. And as you know, municipal bonds generally have maturities out over multiple years. And this just shows their scale going from twenty twenty-one to twenty fifty. The blue line reflects the triple A scale. The red line reflects the double A scale. The green line is the A scale and the black line is the B double A scale. And what is interesting because rates are so low, we have seen significant compression. And with the city's double A minus from S and P and double A plus from Fitch, your, your bonds would trade actually very close to what triple A rated bonds are trading for at this point in time. It's actually a very interesting phenomenon. You can see that the spread on the B double A has widened. We saw this back in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine when we had the same kind of market dislocation. What this is really speaking to is investors are looking for high-grade credits like the city of Harlingen. Next slide. I'll explain in just a minute why I'm going to talk about two treasury slides, this one and the next. This is a chart that goes back for a twenty-five-year history of looking at the ten-year maturity. Again, to just show how significantly over the last twenty-five years, interest rates have declined relative to where we are now. The most current rate as of eleven nineteen was eighty-six basis points. You can see over the course of time where there were periods where the rate was just under seven percent. Next slide. This is the same municipal market data yield curve. However, these are for taxable interest rates. Taxable interest rates are higher than tax-exempt interest rates, although the difference is, is a little bit more narrow in this particular market. And we also see the differential between the triple A, double A, single A credit spreads being very tight relative to the B double A spreads. Okay, moving on, please. Thank you. One more slide. Appreciate that. So we have three separate bond issues that are either currently callable or will soon be callable. You have the original general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty eleven, which has only three maturities left and the coupons of two point three nine. You have the certificates of obligation twenty twelve, which actually has callable maturities twenty twenty-one through twenty thirty-five. And those coupons range from two percent to three percent. And then the third, and those bonds are currently callable. And then the third one we have are the certificates of obligation twenty thirteen. These bonds have coupons ranging from two percent to three and a quarter percent, but those bonds are not callable until August fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. I will tell you that when we did these bond issues back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, those interest rates were so low, we joked that you would never have the opportunity to refund them. But here we are now in a situation with these new historical lows where it potentially creates an opportunity. Next slide, please. So we wanted to highlight, so the series twenty thirteen, as I just mentioned, are not callable until August fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. In Texas, it's standard to have a ten-year par call. But every time we go to the market, we always try to see if we can get a shorter call without a market penalty. And back in twenty thirteen, we were able to negotiate an eight-year call at that particular time. What the call option means for the city is that you have the full discretion to call any, all, a portion or none of the bonds on or after the call date without any interest rate penalty or call penalty. For bondholders though, it means that their investment and their COs are protected until the call date. From a federal tax law perspective, if you do a refunding where you are ninety days or less to the call date, that's called a current refunding. If you are more than ninety days, it is called an advanced refunding and you have to establish an escrow to fund the debt service until the call date. Well, with the tax cuts and jobs act of twenty seventeen, prior to that time, every bond issue was allowed to have one advanced tax-exempt refunding. However, that act took that away. And now you cannot do a tax-exempt advanced refunding. It has to be on a taxable basis. So that really is going to play in some of the timing considerations that we will discuss. Next slide, please. So if we look at the projected savings relative to the twenty eleven and the twenty twelve bonds, on the far right-hand side, we projected a true interest cost of one point seven three and a present value benefit of one point four five. I will tell you very candidly, if, if those were the rates we were to get today, we would not recommend moving forward with it because the present value benefit is so low. But I will tell you, we are seeing interest rates come down. And we also, in an effort to be conservative, looked at market rates plus fifteen basis points. But we just wanted to shout, to show you those and to show you what the impact would be at this particular time. On the next slide, we've isolated the twenty thirteen because this, if you were to do this now, would have to be done on a taxable basis. And if we look at what the projected savings are, we only have two point two three percent based on a true interest cost of two point two two percent. And so again, at this particular time, if that's what we would be able to achieve, we would not recommend moving forward with it. However, if I may ask you to please go to the next slide. If interest rates were to stay the same and if you wait until these could be done on a tax-exempt basis, current refunding, well then your present value savings go up over five percent, five point one three. And the present value savings are over a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars with a projected true interest cost of one point nine oh percent. You will see, and I'll talk about this in just a moment. On this particular slide, we have targeted the debt service savings from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. Next slide. The reason that we target the savings in those years, this is the city's current general obligation debt outstanding. And what we try to do when we look at debt service savings, we don't look at it just on a standalone basis, but we try to look at it from an overall aggregate basis. You have a natural decline in your debt service in twenty twenty-five and then another significant decline in twenty twenty-eight. So what our goal would be, if this is something that the city would like to consider, we would try to target the savings twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four to bring that bar of debt service down slightly. Next slide. Wanted to just highlight on the two, on the, on one page, what the impact is of the twenty thirteen certificates of obligation on a taxable basis versus a tax exempt. So you can see on a gross savings, if you can do it on a tax exempt versus taxable, projected savings go to a hundred and twenty-two thousand versus fifty-two thousand. The projected, um, um, the projected savings on a percent basis would go from a two point two three up to a five point one three percent. And so we really see that there's a very significant difference between the two. And like I said, at this particular time, we would not recommend actually moving forward with the taxable bonds. But we do believe it may be prudent to position the city to eventually move forward with a tax-exempt refunding. One of the things that we do in order to try to put the two in comparison with one another is we undertook a break-even analysis. And interest rates between now and the call date could go up sixty-six basis points and you would be able to achieve the same debt service savings. Well, none of us can guess what is going to happen to interest rates tomorrow, much less out in April or May. But there really is not at this particular time compelling data to indicate that we would expect interest rates to rise sixty-six basis points. Next slide. And next slide. So the, the reason that we're before you this evening is that if the city commission is interested in pursuing a refinancing for your consideration this evening, we are just looking for guidance for the consultants to initiate the process. As you may recall, it, it takes some time to put a bond issue, refinancing bond issue together. We have to prepare disclosure documents. We have to work with the rating agencies. There's, there's multiple steps in the process. And so what, what we're looking for again tonight is just guidance. If this is something that the city would like to undertake, then what we would do is we would come back at a future city commission meeting and have more formal action on the city commission for your consideration. We would propose doing something similar to what we did with our last bond issue, which was a parameter delegation bond sale. What that does is it puts it in day-to-day mode. And if we meet the criteria and to help you remember, you have to in that document define what the minimum savings threshold is, what the maximum interest rate is, what the maximum principal amount is and what the maximum maturity date is. It has a expiration date of generally about six months after it's adopted. And the delegation authority goes to the mayor, city manager and/or the director of finance. And we would prepare a proposed timetable. We would continue to monitor the market. But again, the, the main points of what would happen would occur on a future agenda. Tonight, all we're looking for is just guidance as to whether this is a process that the city commission would like to further pursue. Next slide. Just in summary, interest rates are at historical lows, both on the tax-exempt and taxable markets. And as I mentioned earlier, even with the very low coupons on the three bond issues in this interest rate environment, there are debt service savings projected for each of the three series. Both the twenty eleven and twenty twelve bond issues will be callable February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The twenty twenty, the twenty thirteen bonds are going to be callable on, on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So as noted before, if you were to close a transaction before May thirteenth, it would have to be done on a taxable basis, which we're not really recommending, but we feel like it's important to show you that data. And if you close after May thirteenth, the transaction could be done on a tax-exempt refunding basis with significantly more savings. In order to close by May thirteenth, you could actually price the bond issue mid-April. At that point in time is when interest rates would be locked in. And so with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Does anybody have anything? Mike? Mike, if you have a question, you, you're on mute right now.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so there's eight hundred and forty thousand dollars coming due in twenty twenty, correct?
I'm, oh, you mean with the principal between the three different series?
Correct. That, there are three bonds coming due in twenty twenty. Did I read your, one of the earlier slide correctly?
In twenty twenty-one, these three bond issues all will be callable. The twenty tw-.
And what is the maturity date?
Their maturity date? So if we look at the twenty eleven bonds, it has maturities twenty-two through twenty-four. If we look at the.
Wait, what, your, your slide presentation, one of the first slides showed three bonds callable in February of twenty-one. And they amounted to eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Did I write down the correct information?
So I think, um, so you have one bond issue, the twenty eleven bond issue, which I believe is the one that you're referring to. And yes, sir, the twenty eleven bond issue does have principal due of eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Thank you. And that's the one, that's the one on the left. The one, the one in the center, the twenty twelve bonds actually have over, sorry, the one million six hundred and sixty thousand that is callable. And the twenty thirteen bonds have two million two hundred and ninety thousand that will be currently callable at that time. So you have three different series and they each have different maturity amounts that are callable.
Okay. Uh, oh, I, I forgot to introduce myself as securities licensed financial advisor and financial analyst. To bring that up. Uh, so this, the column on the left, the eight hundred and forty thousand of principal, are you proposing that we consider refinancing them on two fifteen of twenty-one?
So what we would suggest is that if you were to just do that one bond issue, it would not make economic sense because the cost to do it would be too much.
Correct, correct.
What, what, what we are suggesting, yeah, what we are suggesting is that perhaps we wait and we get, we get everything prepared, we get the documents prepared, we get the rating agency process done. We go through all the necessary processes. We get to April, we analyze them all at that time because at that point in time, if we can combine them, then we may be, may be able to achieve economies. Now, what we do when we analyze our refundings, we look at each bond issue on a standalone basis. So say for example, we got to April and interest rates were such that the twenty eleven with just the eight hundred and forty in principal outstanding not make economic sense to refund, then we would not recommend refunding at that time.
Right, right. Okay, we're on the same page. Um, there is no economic, in my opinion, there is no economic reason for interest rates to bump up significantly. That's a whole different discussion. But, um, so the column on the left, those are going to become money market instruments shortly. And it's, it, they're tiny amounts in the bond market world.
The, the good nu, the good news about that is that although those in and of themselves are small amounts, if we aggregate the three bond issues, then you achieve some economies and then potentially, so, so what would happen is if, if we move forward with the refunding, you would have then one series of bonds. We would not refund them into three separate series of bonds. We would, like I said, aggregate them in hopes to achieve economies of scale with it being larger and efficiencies to be able to reduce the cost of issuance.
Yeah, the middle column and the column on the right, I would be open to looking at calling those and issuing. But anything that's really short-term, I would not, I would rather it matured than extend the maturity date on them. Cause that just, so we're paying lower interest, but we're paying it for instead of two years or three or four years, then we're paying it for another ten years or so.
So that is, that, that is an excellent question. And one of the things that we do, because I completely agree with you, extending the debt is, is not beneficial for the city. So even though we would aggregate them into one bond issue, we structure each of the three separately. So the twenty eleven bonds would still have a final maturity in twenty twenty-four. So that's one of the reasons your debt service pays off in twenty twenty-five. So we would, we would not lower your debt service by extending the final maturity. We would make sure that those bonds only had principal amounts twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. And then the other bond issues would have principal amounts twenty twenty-one through twenty thirty-five.
Right, right. Some of these maturing in twenty-four and twenty-five at two percent perhaps. Uh, but this, the, the bonds maturing in twenty twenty-eight, two point seven five, all the way up to three, three and a quarter there. Uh, those would be ripe for refinancing, in my opinion. Because as you said, if you, well, not that many years ago, that was really low interest rates, but interest rates have plummeted since and I'll repeat, I don't see interest rates going up. So I would enter, I would love to entertain the two and a half, two and a quarter, two and a half, three and a quarters next spring. And I guess I'm done.
I have a quick question. This is Commissioner Liao. You were talking about the twenty thirteen refinancing in May, but it's not callable till August. Is that because of the ninety-day window?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So even though it is not callable, federal tax law does say as long as it's within ninety days of the call date, you can consider it a current refunding and it would be able to be done on a tax-exempt basis. Yes, sir, that's right.
So the difference is you can still call it, it'd just be taxable. That's the difference.
If, if you do it before April, it'll be taxable. And if you do it, if you price April or after, then it will be tax exempt. Yes, sir.
Very good. Okay. That, that, you answered my question.
And tax exempt sells a whole lot easier than taxable on the municipal world.
Correct.
Hey, does anybody, anybody else have any other questions? So the potential saving here, savings here is around a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars if we, uh, we refinance the bonds and there would not be an extension of the maturity date, correct?
Yes, sir, Mayor, that is correct. We would not extend the maturities.
Okay, so the action that is being requested tonight is really just to, if the commission is interested in saving the hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and not moving forward with maturity and not extending the maturity date would just be to begin the preparation for a decision of a later date to move forward with a refinance. Is that right?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Bring it back to create the parameters to move forward with the refinance.
Okay.
May I make to make that motion?
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Uribe to offer. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Uribe to offer-
This requires a, a motion then?
There is action to authorize the city manager to proceed with the, uh, preliminary, preliminary work. This doesn't commit, but it does not commit us to the refinancing at this time.
Okay, I missed the action part on the, on the agenda. Yes, the answer is I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anne, please, all those who oppose, motion carries. All right, thank you, Anne and Robert.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone.
And I'm glad we don't have to drive back to San Antonio tonight.
Thank you, sir. I hope you all have a nice evening. Thank you, same to you.
All right, item four is a consideration possible action to approve a proposal from Scout David Molina, who will fund and construct improvements at the Tony Butler Golf Course as part of his Eagle Scout project.
Mayor, uh, David Molina is one of our, uh, troop eighteen eighty-nine's scout. He's, uh, he's working on this Eagle Scout project, so as a scout master, I'd like to have the honor to present him to our city commission and yourself, Mayor. So, uh, Mr. Molina has a good project that will, uh, help our community. And, uh, we're gonna, we'll turn it over to David and let him do his presentation.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. David, welcome. We're glad to have you here at our meeting via Zoom tonight and, uh, we're excited about your, uh, to hear about your project, so go ahead.
Let me just share really quick. Okay, can, can you guys see it?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, my name is David Molina and this is my Eagle Scout project pro- proposal from troop eighteen eighty-nine. If approved, I will be repairing the security fence for the maintenance and storage yard that is adjacent to the Tony Butler Golf Course. I will use resources that have been donated to me and if possible salvage and recycle anything I can. I will be asking for volunteers that will consist of family, friends, and the people in my troop. A schedule will be made for coordination, organization, and time management purposes. The volunteers will have to be in good health, meaning no signs of illness, and must wear masks in order to prevent others from catching any sort of, of virus or illness. Furthermore, volunteers will also be required to follow PPE regulations and standards such as safety glasses, work gloves, closed toe shoes, and possibly face shields. This fence will not only secure any materials within the area, but overall beautify it completely and make it more appealing and safe. In addition, it will also serve as a boundary against potential hazards. For example, the fence is approximately one hundred feet from a public golf cart trail that is, that people also use for walking. Furthermore, Tony Butler Golf Course is directly connected to Victor Park. Many people use it connecting roads and trails to jog, run, or bike. This is a hazard not only to the Tony Butler Golf Course, but to the community as well. Um, I will begin working on this project upon approval, hopefully this month, sometime December. And, um, I would like this project to be completed quickly. With that being said, I expect the fence to be fully repaired in a time span of one to three days. Thank you for listening to my presentation. Please feel free to share any questions or concerns.
Anybody have a comment, uh, for David?
Can I make the motion for an approval?
All right, we have motions here, a second. A second from, uh-
Yeah, Messmore seconds.
Commission from, uh, second from Commissioner Messmore. All of, all those in favor say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, good, David, good luck on your project, good luck on your, uh, Eagle Board of Review. Uh, thank you for, uh, finding a project that will be helpful to uh, our city and the community and, uh, the golf course. I know the golf course, uh, patrons will be very grateful, uh, for this, uh, project once it's completed. Thanks, thanks again. Thanks for being in our meeting.
Thank you for your time and, um, thank you for your approval.
All right, next item is number five, and, and thank you Scout Master Delarosa for, uh, for getting this young man to where, where he can get to this project. Item five, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution, amending resolution number R twenty twenty dash twenty-six to revise the one-year action plan budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, year forty-six of the Community Development Block Grant Program and fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one, year twenty-six of the Home Investment Partnership Program home due to an error in HUD's formula calculations.
Um, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and staff. Um, on July the first of this year, uh, the City Commission approved a resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-six, um, which included the budget for our twenty twenty CDBG and home, um, entitlement allocations from the U.S. Department of Housing and Community Affairs. I'm sorry, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. Um, we recently received notice from HUD that there was an error in the formula, uh, calculations. And so therefore, um, the allocation amounts, uh, changed very slightly. Uh, we come before you today, um, to amend resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-six, uh, to revise both the CDBG and the home. Um, these revisions will only affect the general administration of the CDBG by a hundred and thirty-five dollars and, uh, the administration of home by seventy-nine dollars. Um, we come before you just, um, for the record, to make sure that, um, this is on record.
So we are, we're doing this for transparency, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, and the reduction is being taken from the administrative side, so it's not affecting any of the programs uh, through housing rehab or social services. And staff is recommending approval.
I'll second Victor's approval. I'll second Victor.
All right, we have a motion and a, and a second to approve the resolution. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing now, does, all those in favor say aye, raise your hand?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right, thank you. Item six, discussion of possible action to approve the bids received on the following properties struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale conducted on November third, twenty twenty, legal description, the North One Half, uh, Lot Seventeen Colonial Guadalupe subdivision number two, in addition to Cranwick County, Texas, as described in volume thirteen twenty-seven, page four sixty-seven, official records of Cameron County, account number one six six seven zero 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 one seven zero zero zero. And B, legal description, point three 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 acre, more or less, of Block Seven Harlison Land and Water Company subdivision B, a subdivision of Cameron County, Texas, as described, the deed dated January ninth, nineteen ninety-two, from William and York, York Junior to Sandra Noronho and all in volume nineteen thirty-two, page one twenty-eight, official records of Cameron County, Texas, account number ninety-seven seven fifty-seven double oh zero seven zero zero eight zero dash eight hundred.
Mayor Commissioners, John Gavada will provide some background information on this, these items. You're, you're on mute, John.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Mr. Serna and members of the commission, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item is actually combined with, uh, item seven. Uh, it's the same topic. Uh, but on item six, which, what is before you are two offers from our most recent tax resale. Uh, allow me, if you'll allow me, I'll, I'll kind of go through the process again, uh, you know, that I usually go through. Uh, we have a tax resale at least once a year. Um, every once in a while we'll have two per year. This year we had one in November. And the way we get resale properties is we, when we take a judgment, we put the properties, uh, all the for, all the, uh, the judgments on for tax sale. And if a bid does not come in at that tax sale, then the properties are struck off, uh, to the county, the city, and the school as trustees for one another until we can offer them for sale again. So at that point, they are no longer in the name of the taxpayer. They're now owned by the, the, the three entities, uh, sometimes four entities. Uh, that being the case, they are tax exempt. They're not producing any income for the entities. Uh, we put them up for resale when we get a sufficient, uh, number of properties, uh, struck our properties that would, uh, uh, you know, get people, get a good turnout for a, a tax resale. We usually hold these at the end of the year. We had it on November third. These are the two tr- properties from Harlingen that we put up for sale. Uh, you're getting, the offers are, are below what you're owed, but that's typically the case at a resale. Uh, the opening bid is the amount that you're owed. If there are no bids at that point, then the, the sheriff's department, the deputy will take offers from the floor. Those offers will be accepted, subject to your approval, the school district's approv- approval, and the county's approval. Uh, we've already gone before the county. The county has approved all the offers. Uh, in this particular offering, you will get about fifty cents on the dollar. Um, and, um, but more importantly, the properties will go back onto the tax roll. Um, one of the properties we've actually put up for sale, this was the third sale that we put it up. Uh, and, uh, we, we did get an offer on it. Um, so with that, you, uh, you're getting, you were owed three thousand two hundred and twenty-one sixty-one. Uh, after taking all the costs into, you know, everybody needs to get paid, like the newspaper, court costs, any ad items that were appointed. Um, you're getting one thousand six hundred and thirty-two off of these two properties. Roughly about fifty, little over fifty percent, uh, of what you're owed. And so this item is what you would, you would, you would either accept or decline the offers. And on the next item, uh, you would authorize, uh, a resolution that goes with the deed to the new owner. Um, that's the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer them at this time.
And I have a real quick question that I, and I think I've asked it before, but I forget the answer. When, when, when they, when these come up for sale, for example, if it's a fifty thousand dollar property and they bought it for ten thousand dollars, the taxable, um, when it gets back on the tax roll, it's, it's still at the fifty thousand dollar value? Or does it get reduced to the purchase price?
It, it's whatever the appraisal district appraises is at, appraises the property at. Uh, and so it, it's not gonna, it's not, the-
It doesn't affect them?
Right, the resale is not a market price, uh,
Okay.
for the purposes of appraisals.
Okay, sir, thank you. I appreciate them.
Good question.
Anybody else have any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the bids received on the properties?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Uh, item seven, I'll read the item and then I'll ask, uh, Amanda to call Mr. Lozano. Item seven is consideration of possible action to approve the following resolutions for the bids received on the tax resale conducted on November third, twenty twenty, for the above referenced properties. A, a resolution approving a bid on the tax resale of the North One Half Lot, Seventeen Colonial Guadalupe subdivision number two, and a resolution approving the bid received on the tax three acres, more or less, on a Block Seven Harlison Land and Water Company subdivision B. Amanda, would you?
Yes, Mayor, I will.
I'm at-
Yes, Ron, um-
I'm, I made a mis- I made a mistake. I need, I need to be on the next item, number eight, which is coming right up.
That's Mayor?
Okay, just hang on, then hang on the line, don't, don't, we'll go to the next item, just stay on the line, please, so we don't have to talk back.
Thank you.
Okay, Ron.
I heard, I heard.
Is there, is there a motion to a- approve the resolutions for the bids?
So moved. I think Ruben, Ruben Delarosa had his hand up as either the motion or the second.
Okay, motion by Liao, second by Delarosa. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, item eight, consideration of possible action to authorize city manager on behalf of the city of Harlingen to purchase three hundred and seventeen TA IT portable radios, dash mounts, radio consult consoles, including related accessories and services from Tri-County Communications in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars to equip police, fire, and public work departments.
Ron, I'm gonna set the clock at two minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you may start now.
Uh, good evening. Uh, thank you for the intrusion. Um, my first query is, there's, uh, the amount that the ma- the mayor decided and, uh, the two funds that are tapped into, the general fund and the, um, mobile, uh, motor vehicle and radio rental fund account end up with a six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollar variance. And so I guess I would ask, the, the one person with gumption, Mr. Sena, where does that, um, variance of almost seven thousand dollars, where does it end up? Or is that gonna be eight, somewhere along the line? Hello?
I'm, I'm sorry, I had my, my mic muted. Um, so the, the difference will remain in the vigor, in the regular depreciation fund.
The regular depreciation, okay, thank you. Uh, the other matter that I wanted to bring out, uh, is that, um, there's something from the police and the fire and, uh, the, the main delineation is the AES encryption. And so regarding the same type of, uh, radio with the, that exception that I decided, there's a four hundred and fifty-six dollar variance uh, between the police and the fire. And then on the second one, that's the first one, and then on the second one right below it, there's a four hundred dollar, uh, difference. And I guess it's hard for me to distinguish why there would be a fifty-six dollar variance uh, between those two items in, in particular. Is there a, a response that you might have for that?
Uh, Ron, your two minutes are up.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm done. I'm just waiting for them, for the or the Dan or some, yeah, nearly Dan, it's not shy, everybody else is.
Well, maybe they can answer that during their presentation, I bet you're, uh, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Lozano.
All right, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Good night.
Mayor Commissioners, I think I can, uh, touch on that for Mr. Lozano. And that's, that is because of the encryption that the, uh, police department requires for their radios. That does make them significant, not significantly, but a little bit more expensive. But this item in particular is to replace, uh, the three hundred plus radios that are end of life and no longer supported by Motorola. Uh, so when we looked at that, we went out for bids between uh, South Texas Communication, which is Motorola, and then Tri-County Communications, which has the Tate radio. And, uh, long story short, the radios are comparable that were presented. But, uh, the Tate one was a little less expensive, so that's the one we're, uh, recommending we go with. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
I make the motion for an approval now.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you all. Item nine, consideration of possible action to accept via agreement, a twenty-five thousand dollar donation from the Sam Feldman family in honor of his father, Charles B. Feldman, in support of the Harlison Arts and Heritage Mu- Museum HEB Historical Building Renovation Project.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, and City Commissioners, uh, city managers. Uh, a little over a year ago, Mr. Feldman, uh, reached out to me from Dallas after reading an article in the Valley Morning Star uh, about the, the renovation project that we have going on out here at the museum. Um, uh, and said that, that his family would like to do something i- in honor of his father, Charlie. Um, I'm sure that most of you know who Charlie Feldman is, um, uh, and, uh, what we'd like to do as part of the, as part of the, uh, newly restored historical building, um, there is a corner that we have, Sam and I took kind of a bifurcated approach on this, and there is a corner on the, uh-